...Webster, June 11, 2024. We have two table matters that we're going to be reviewing today and one scheduled matter for today. We have, not that today is going to hopefully take too long, but we do have the right at 10:00 PM to table any remaining matters. I'm hoping that we don't go that long today. Additionally, there's a five-minute limit to public comment here on any particular item. Do you have a proof of legal publication for all items here? That call for attendance.
Mrs. Polo, here. Mr. Hause.
Here.
Mr. Short.
Here.
Mr. Santola.
Here.
Mr. Leidner.
Here.
Mr. DeMarco.
Here.
Mr. Arquita.
Here.
All right, okay. Plaid allegiance? Plaid allegiance.
In the United States of America, in this republic, we wish to say that one nation under God, in this law, with every right and justice for all.
With that, we move on to our first item, which is 671 Willow Lane accessory structure.
Do you want it to be entered into the record?
Sure, yeah, please.
671 Willow Lane accessory structure located at 671 Willow Lane. Advocate Brian Bishop King is requesting area variances to allow a side setback less than what is required and to allow the placement of an accessory structure to be nearer to the front property line than the rear line of the main residence associated with the construction of a 500-square-foot detached wood-framed structure on a .46-acre parcel in an SPAM number 065.13-2-11 located in an R3-Cent family residential district under sections 350-12 and 350-26 of the code of the town.
How's it going?
Good evening. Oh, wow. How are you?
Uh, will you give us an update from last time?
Yes. So the graphic that's up there is a depiction of the three alternatives. Tough to point to it, but the upper rightmost one is where the, a little more to the right, right there is where the application stands. And then the board did ask us to identify where the power lines were, the swing distance, and the height of those. So the actual measurement out there on that piece of paper is four foot eleven is what we measured in terms of the swing that it can do. So that gives us the buffer. And then the board asked us to look at two other alternatives of either keeping the five foot and pushing it back as far as we could to avoid those wires. And that's what the one is, the building sliding back. And that pushes it back about seventeen and a half feet. And likewise, we've looked at it as eliminating the side setback and pushing it fifteen feet off of the lot line. But of course, because of the diagonal electrical wires, that's why it's pushed a little forward towards Willow Lane. So I hope that addresses the request from the board. There should be a photo that went along with this. Yes. It's tougher to see this when this is from the road, but right after the meeting, we did go out and state that out. Those were measured of those three locations and he color-coded the ribbons. So hopefully everybody got a chance to go out there and see it. Obviously doesn't depict height, but we're just looking at the area of placement for each of those alternatives.
Can you go back to the previous graphic? So looking at this, the original option required side-in, front setback. Option one also required a side-in and front setback, but it's further back from the front of the house, obviously. And option two on here would only require a front setback on the variance. Correct? Side-in would not require a side-in.
Correct.
Okay. I need you to get a chance to go out there. And thank you for stating that out. It was very helpful.
Good.
Look, this graphic doesn't show, but the photo does show is that there is a fairly mature maple tree right there, which is five feet plus or minus into option one. So that maple tree, if they decide to move option one, you know, that is considered, that maple tree would have to be roomed to accommodate that. And I believe, depending on my conversations, there's concerns with some of the other options.
That's correct. So the concern and one of the main reasons, or another reason why Brian would like to have that pushed up is not only the electric wires, as we discussed last meeting, it's estimated to be around $7,500 to relocate the telecommunication wires and the electric so that the building could be code compliant put in the back. But in addition to that, you have around $4,500 to take down that tree. If this last tree, it does provide some shade to neighbors. But even pushing it back further, you worry about the root structure that might be down there. So having a buffer off of that would definitely help to keep that alive.
Any questions from the board? Do you have any preferred options?
Of course, the preferred one is the application as it came in. But to minimize variance and understanding that, if, I know we're trying to keep it brief here, I do have a presentation if the board wants it, where I can call out some of the things we're looking for and just to help you document your decision-making, a defining statement of why you want it. If you wanted, I can hand it to you. I'm not sure if it's sufficient or not. But to just go through a couple of them, the preferred one would be the one five foot off the property line, just to keep it off of that side, but put it towards that hedgerow that's in there. But maybe not putting it right in, as far up to the front face or the front plane, yes, right there, but pushing it back. So kind of a blending between the preferred location and the furthest back one. So maybe splitting the difference between those and moving it back. Brian, you can speak to that better. How far back would you be willing to, or would you be interested in minimizing this variance by pushing it back towards the front, back toward to the back of the building?
So the distance from the proposed location to the tree right now is nine, almost exactly nine feet. So I'd be willing to go three feet back and give that six-foot buffer for any limbs coming down or anything like that. It is a maple tree and they are not as nice as the structures that the plant just come on. For a pine tree, I have a different view.
Have you completely exhausted the thought of using an attached garage to the existing building?
This, this is definitely the preferred, preferred setback.
Preferred, but the other is definitely an option, or?
Uh, it is more costly, yes. It is a lot, a lot more expensive. So that would not be something we're looking for.
Because we, with respect to removing the power lines or constructions?
Construction saw.
And just to clarify that, sir, by the town code, he's allowed to have an accessory structure. We're just talking about the variances. So it's a good question that he should entertain, especially on the economics of it. But he has permitted a shed and an accessory structure. So I just want to point out that clarification.
He is permitted that.
Yes.
Obviously, when it complies with the code.
Correct. So that would mean he would have to put the accessory structure back.
Asking for relief.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good clarification. So to be clear even to Brian, that would be a permitted structure, that he would have the additional cost of relocating the tree and, and the electric wires.
Any other questions?
In the neighborhood, are there any other similar structures, two-story?
Sir, in terms of two stories, I didn't search out that. But in terms of accessory structures, I did search that out. In the 403 unit house zone, if we're given last month, there's actually 135 accessory structures. And just around the corner, I did see a detached structure that was, I don't have the square footage, nor do I have the height. But once again, it's relative to that house's roof line. It was, their garage is detached and that would count as an accessory structure. So there is one around the corner that's similar to it. Once again, it's not necessarily a height that I'm reporting or a two-story, but it's to match the ridgeline of the house that's there.
Will this structure have enough space to store everything? The top side curtain?
Everything as far as?
Can you get that mic so we can hear you?
Yeah, what, sorry. What is?
Any electric tractors and trailers?
So both can fit, the garage door has been sized, so both can fit inside, the tractor can fit inside, the snowmobiles can fit inside. So between that and the attached garage in my house, the car can go inside, you know, my attached garage in the house. So the snowmobile trailer does not fit inside. That, that can stay in the driveway.
And I think you said last month that his goal is to take some of his grandparents' belongings that were in the basement and start relocating those to some other storage instead of the basement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
The man door, the overhead door, and, I don't know, is a window for sliding glass door on the second floor, based on the image that I'm looking at. Those are all proposed to be facing the street?
So facing Willow Lane would be a garage door, a man door, and that is the second floor access for larger items. Door is not necessarily set in stone on the front. If I have enough room in the back by keeping the structure closer to Willow Lane, then I can move that door to the back of the structure and put a window up front. So the drawing is preliminary. It's until I have examined where I can place the building, I'll model exactly on the layout of this.
Okay. So it's a, that's another door up top is what that is for larger items to go in.
Correct.
Essentially.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. With that, we're up over to, to the public. Does anybody here want to speak for or against this project? As a reminder, we have a five-minute limitation on?
I don't have slides today, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
At the last meeting, this issue was tabled. When it came to, should we vote tonight, or should we table it? And Brian would provide answers for some of the design and how a building would be constructed, would it match the siding on his house so that, you know, things would look all right? What is being proposed here tonight puts me in a position of looking at Brian's house, his attached garage, the aging and the deteriorating air stream. Then there'll be a small patch of land, maybe, if that's not where the doghouse goes. And then we're going to have this big structure, and I'm going to look at two garage doors and a man door. Two garages, rose by any other name, smells of sweet, isn't allowed in code in my neighborhood. I ask you to take the interest of the person not seeking variance, wanting to go and being in compliance with the town code to deal with that. As I spoke with Mr. Artuso last week sometime, I could live with the aging camper being gone, which gets drunk here looking by the moment, and no proof of licensure as he was asked to provide seven years ago. And that was removed if the building he was requesting was rotated 45 degrees so that 45 or 90. So that the entrance, his garage door and man door, are facing his house and that the exterior of the utility building be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. And this, like this is a well-developed, mature suburb. And to start this, this is chosen respect for the nature of the property that I bought, not seeking to have a huge structure. I apologize for not getting something in print. I have not felt well for a subtle base. But do you kind, do you hear what I'm saying? Do you have any questions?
Anybody else have any questions?
So could he pose two contingents, that I would wish that, I said, so that he deals with his driveway doors that way? And, or another thing is, he could move his trailers behind the house. There's room for that. So thank you very much. And I appreciate courtesy throughout this process.
Thank you.
Judge, please. A town code allows a recreational vehicle to be parked in the side yard, one in the rear yard, and one in the front yard on the driveway. Is this some preference to license and registration or is it required? And up to my knowledge, I don't think that applies.
Any additional questions back at the board? Or, sorry, public session's not closed yet. Anybody else want to speak for or against the project? Bob?
Hi, I'm Jim Barrett. I'm with the, at 1271 Oak Creek, which is the joint property of Brian's. And just wanted, you know, clarify our position. Brian shared all the changes and things he's gone through, variances, and then he's looked for, communicated everything with us as we went along. From our perspective, we see it as improvements to a lot of the areas of what we understand from this property. The even taking care of the drainage, the drainage between the houses and that was a good, was a good plan because it helped us as well. And I think, you know, as far as, from our perspective, where we are, everybody has a structure in their backyard for putting things in. So, you know, we're looking at this as more of the same. It doesn't, it doesn't present a problem for us on our side of the fence. And just in, in 2009, we put a shed in our yard, we had the requirement of 15 feet from the property line, and we should add that back to five feet where we were hoping it would be because that would help us a lot. And I'm sure that would help Brian in his options as well. But we just wanted to portray our support. No objections to what's going on.
Thank you. Any other, more questions on the project?
We did receive a comment on mine. It's better than.
Yeah, would you like?
This comment was received from Richard Etter from 1244 Cloverwood Drive.
So you couldn't speak up?
Yes. So this comment's from Richard Etter at 1244 Cloverwood Drive, which is around the corner from 671 Willow Lane. Well, I can't directly see this property from my, I drive and walk by it every day. I am opposed to the variance as submitted for the following reasons. I can sympathize with the applicant in terms of needing more space for his lawn tractor and snowmobiles. However, the proposed two-story, 500-square-foot structure seems to be overkill for that use. A simple extension of the existing garage, either rearward or to the north side, would easily accomplish this. A two-story structure is not in line with the other storage structures in our neighborhood. Most are in the range of 150 square feet or so. None of them are two stories. Given that the applicant has a home-based electrical business, I can't help but suspect the structure will be used primarily for that purpose. It will also not reduce the amount of vehicles already in the yard, such as the deteriorating airstream trailer, the snowmobile trailer, and the boat. If this application was for a single-story structure of lesser size, I don't think there would be much concern. It would better fit aesthetically and it wouldn't interfere with the overhead electrical lines that supply the house. So it could be relocated and not require variances. It would also not have as much of visual impact for the homeowner directly across the street on the road. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Okay, the public session is closed. Bring it back to the board. Any other questions at the board?
Well, all the board members that were proposing would press.
Last night was not.
So all of them. You, you, you managed to go through?
Yes, I.
So you're fully at speed.
Any other questions from the board? Comments?
I think it was helpful for me to visit the property with multiple locations staked out. And because looking at the survey map, it doesn't give you the location of the trees and wires in real time as opposed to just the straight line of the wire. And it gave me a much better feel for the impact of the size and location of the building with respect to all of the continuing escapers on the property. So thank you. I appreciate that applicant and this engineer going through their work for us because it did certainly help my perspective. I don't know, I'm sure as far as the patient. I could see advantages. I could see advantages to the existing location. I could see advantages to bringing it in 15 feet from the setback except I know we asked the applicant to consider eliminating one variance by, by removing it in 15 feet. The downside of that is now that I've pulled it out of the hedgerow, it's much more visible.
Yep.
Which didn't, I mean, I kind of knew it, but didn't see it until it was actually physically seen.
Yeah, I mean, even in this photo here, I mean, you look at the white stakes right in front of you, half of that building is inside the hedgerow.
Right.
Granted, that hedgerow will probably come back to a certain degree and whatnot, but, you know, the black stakes are right out in the open and the white and black, red stakes are about halfway into, into that hedgerow. So I'm of the same, same opinion. You know, the zoning code allows the height of the structure, the zoning code allows the square footage of the structure. Realistically, we're looking at the location. There are wires in the back that are preventing, preventing this from truly fitting in that particular location due to the wires. You know, and that's, you know, eliminating one of the variance requirements is great, but it puts a big, big structure very visible.
Oh, it's going to be visible regardless. You care about whether it's five or 15 feet.
Sure.
It's now that the hedgerow, what remains of it is going to be, you know, redirecting your eyesight. But I think it would, it works better from my standpoint with a five-foot setback into the hedgerow. My concern is, if you said it's allowed by the state, or leading state, but we need, you know, here's a photo that I want to see it be as close to matching the exterior of the existing house as possible as far as a look. Not necessarily the exact same material, but giving it a lower, much more residential look in a two-story accessory structure, which you can match, find match for shingles, put druthers on it, put some, you could have fake aesthetics on it, right? There's a real one doing it. Just something that brings up this model that's slammed aside, beside, besides the door. And my, my concern is that that's overreaching our movies to dictate our potential. But that's my concern. Just because I guess if, if, if we were to entertain it, I would like to see it be as aesthetically pleasing as possible.
That's just all.
And I think it also doesn't, we, we have no power to do anything about the other issues that may, what some of the residents may feel are occurring. Obviously, there's folks, but whether we improve this or not, we're still going to be that same issue.
Sure. Tr trailers.
Right, I mean, so the way I see it is, we can't, I can't really look at it as, unless the wrong point being this accessory structure, it really doesn't matter because they have a right to keep this. Unless, like I said, this job said the code, you know, needs to be licensed or something like that. If it doesn't, then why would I say I just going to have one more thing to add to that very busy side yard?
Well, one thing that I think the applicant expressed to us is there is material, I guess I'll call it. There was quite a bit in the side area of the old shed that is kind of very old, it's in some ways. But that would be coming out and that side area would get cleaned up if I'm still understanding correctly. So it would, I think the building would meet all the requirements. The campers will be there, you're allowed to have a camper. But if it gets some of the other miscellaneous items out of sight, it, I think it benefits.
I agree, I just.
The applicant and the neighbors.
I agree, but there are certain things that we don't have a control over.
Right. We can't say you can't have what the code allows you to have, but.
Including an up to 1500 square foot accessory structure.
Correct.
That's unless the applicant insists.
Does that also apply to architectural?
Sure. We may not be able to condition it, but they may, in the street component.
Sure.
Probably may be evidence of the two-story. You got a 500 square foot, what, two stories? You got a thousand square foot. Next to it is a bunch of houses. Essentially, you have two home-sized structures on that. Just as a product, two-story.
Does the charter code prohibit number of floors or, and if the square footage is flipped, right, it is not a floor structure, which is correct.
Correct. Can it be higher than the insurance?
And there's a limit. And there's a limit. I think it's, but you cannot exceed twenty feet.
Yeah, that's, that's not to the ridge, that's to, like, the midpoint.
Well, let's say cambered.
Right.
So mean height.
So it's pretty hard to read for B. Which, I mean, this is shown twenty-two foot two, so. So again, unfortunately, I, I just dictated by the I hear you. I think I'm agreeing, right? The, you know, half-acre, I think these are half-acre plots in the neighborhood. Accessory structure, five-hundred square feet, go up to twenty-two feet tall. Other, any other comments?
With respect to some of the aesthetics that the board has discussed, is there anything the applicant wants to comment as to what they are willing or not willing to? Strictly voluntarily, you know, it's, it doesn't have to be a requirement of your presentation, but the comments made by the board, I don't want to not allow you to comment as that is something that you're in agreement to doing or not in agreement with.
So, like, like I said before, the drawings that I provided are preliminary. I don't have a final. This is exactly what it's going to look like. Because of location, obviously, I can, I can swing doors, you know, second-floor door, I can swing that to the back and put a window there that's actually going to, currently I was planning on putting it at the back, but I can flip-flop those. And I just don't, can't make that decision without, without a vote.
And what about the materials, the appearance of the building? The board has talked about consistent with the exterior look of that, the home. Is that something that you're willing to stipulate to or something?
So the exterior of the home is, let me chime in on that.
Let, let, let me just mention.
Yep, sorry, go ahead.
Is that something you're willing to stipulate to or something that you'd rather leave outside the application?
So because the exterior of the existing home is most likely going to be upgraded not at the same time as the structure, but.
So, I don't need to cut you off. It's kind of a yes or no question.
So I think what he's going to ask, he wants them to complement each others, but they may not match at the exact same time because he may build this first with the color scheme that he wants and then invest in resurfacing the facade of the existing structure.
If I may add to, our concern is that it's going to be a metal pole barn.
Right.
Looking structure that does not fit within the residential neighborhood. Are you willing to utilize materials and design aesthetics that provide a residential look to the new structure that would complement the residential neighborhood that you're in?
I haven't looked at any surfaces that I've ever heard available right now. I know the general idea of what I'm looking for, not as far as the finish, but how I want the building to be constructed, I guess, is the guy's answer for installation and for.
What's the siding going to be?
I don't know. Currently, my, my house is metal sided. So.
So I think what they're getting at is you're not planning on putting in an industrial-style, metal-sided, brick-and-roofed pole barn. The architectural idea that Mr. Lozen took together is that it would be constructed of some kind of materials, it could be metal studs, whatever it is, but it will be residential and neighbor, neighborhood or character and then be constructed in that fashion. Not industrial looking or pre-manufactured, but rather.
Again, I don't, I don't have a finished look to the structure.
He has a top half.
Are you amenable to?
I, I think the answer is no. It's pretty clear to me.
Understand that you don't have materials selected. I guess, are you amenable to?
Different options, yes.
Committing to?
Committing to residential-type materials similar to those found in the neighborhood now.
I don't want to look so hard, but, yeah.
You live in the neighborhood. Is it going to be siding? If it's going to be siding, what, are you going to, are you going to have metal siding?
I, I could, yes. Like I said, I, I don't know.
I just.
I don't know what's better.
And I understand this.
All right. I, I currently have, I've got an accessory structure, a twenty-by-twenty-four accessory structure. It's got two garage doors, it's also got windows, its side is the same color as the house, like, it's the same shingles as the house. So when you drive by, it doesn't stand out, it's a hot red metal pole barn. It's a gray and white building that looks just like the house next door and just like the house it's on the same property as. Can you make it look like it belongs to the neighborhood where it has some softer design features? Or are you planning on putting a, a steel pole barn, which I guess technically you're allowed to accept that there's no location under that that complies, but what would look much more industrial and less welcoming in a residential neighborhood?
Yes, I'm looking, definitely looking for, obviously, a metal roof, but it may be even metal shingles. So I, I, again, I don't know what the profit is, but yes, I'm looking to have the house and the barn eventually match.
Accessory structure.
Maybe the current accessory structure. So yes, the two are eventually going to match, but currently the house is a faded current.
Right, and I understand a house is stated and needs.
That needs to be upgraded as well.
Right.
So yes, they are going to pop up against each other.
Let me ask this question. I'm not saying this would occur, but if it did occur, what happens if it gets, if it gets put up and it is a, we give the variance and moves forward and ends up being metal?
Well, I don't even know that I want to stipulate not metal because there are metal buildings that are trashed.
And metal roofs are totally acceptable, so it's, it's.
Industrial, I'll say industrial, but, sorry, just, you know.
But. Something that doesn't complement the residential neighborhood.
If you were on its own, it would stick out like a sore thumb.
Yep.
Because it doesn't match the existing characteristics of the general surroundings here. And you might be looking at materials much as a book.
Just, yeah.
I mean, that's what I think we're looking at. It's metal and it looks good.
Right.
And I would be, I would pose a metal, I would pose a, some, I would also post, or even metal, or even T-one-eleven, I'd be opposed to. So that's, that's my concern is that we, if we're going to approve any relief request, it's got to really, really fit in and be, for me to feel comfortable to, to vote for something.
The answer is probably only that you should ask for an architectural line of that. Because perception is, perception, so you're going to see these.
Yeah.
This is describing, this is maybe different from what I'm receiving.
I, I agree, but without the applicant providing any more information, I don't, don't know what to do.
Well, and I would be reluctant, as, as a homeowner, I would be reluctant to hire somebody to design a building for me without having an approval. I think the applicant has stated that the upstairs door can go on the back and then you can soften the front look with, I don't know, parrotwood nose or something. I mean, garage door and main door is not out of character. But but the upstairs door definitely want to see them there just because otherwise it looks, it looks more barn-like and rather used-to-be-old farms, it's not anymore, so. No.
I think the applicant is asking for a, I think, a prosecution.
Those are the words.
Josh, you have a question with respect to planning board meeting because I think you were beginning of ours dead twice. On the planning board, I guess, to review any accessory structure and assess if I have a little square feet. If it's a two-story building, they technically have a thousand square feet of floor space. Do they look at? Does the code reflect floor space or does the code reflect? Area. Because I know I had to go to the planning board for mine, which is letting me know where the next.
Listen to the character.
Yeah, traditionally, it's, it's the footprint of the structure that's calculated. I will say if this was one square foot larger, it would go before the planning board and they would require that you provide the materials. They actually required that you bring in samples of the materials, so.
Isn't that, isn't that going to be a component of the cost of destruction?
Cost, sorry, but the cost of the structure is a requirement.
In terms of providing.
Well, yeah, for our building, for our approval here. It is a field on our application, it's that way. But I think out of the code, it's required, right?
Yeah, it's only one B.
Right. B four, right? What is the cost of the structure?
It was estimated twenty-five.
The estimate is an aggregate of what components? Materials.
Material layer.
Right, what's the material?
The, the wood, insulation, the, you know, start to finish. It was just a.
That, that, the, the siding of the building?
Yes.
So you, I guess I'm confused.
I, I didn't, so, I just was.
If you're telling me on the one hand you don't know what it's going to be made of or how it's going to look, but you didn't get an estimate, I'm going to be impressed.
So usually those cost estimates are order of magnitude where it could be vinyl siding, it could be aluminum siding, it could be.
Right, but if, if the board wants to see a itemized estimate, you don't have it.
Correct.
All right, so you need to have it.
We need to have a total positive.
Right, well, I guess after the board to decide whether it's just an aggregate number, they want to see the content, so the board could take their position tonight if the application is not complete. And we read cable again. And maybe by that time your applicant might have some more concrete answers as to what the building might look like. And then the board at that point may be a little more comfortable.
So, so to backtrack a little bit of where he was going, because my friend is more on the industrial side. He's talking at the metal siding part because there is horizontal.
What I'm saying, is he, is he an electrician?
He does.
All right. You know, his answer seemed a little ambiguous for a guy in the construction trade as to this stage of the process, not knowing what this building is going to look like. When you don't see applicants, neighbors want to know. It's not a big ask, it's not a heavy list for a guy in the business. That just doesn't seem like he's being genuine about it.
Well, I, I can't answer that one, but he.
I'm just telling you what I'm hearing, that's all.
I got you.
You know, if, if he said he was, you know, a baker making cupcakes and doesn't know anything about construction, I guess I would buy him.
Got you.
But it sounds like, it sounds a little invasive to me. And he doesn't have that part of the application complete.
Correct.
So he's asking us to make a leap, but he doesn't want to help us.
I got you. So he is looking for the variance first before the final, because you did hire an architect, but those first concepts.
Just, just to give us a footprint, general layout. I, I haven't gone the next step further to get all the specs.
So, so to put a question mark on here, what type of roof is on your building right now, on your house?
I have a, a single sheet.
No, what type of, is it a hip, is it a gam, a gamble roof, is it?
The house is a gamble room.
I, I want to see the answer.
My, my assistant is, yes.
So he's got a gamble roof, that this structure could match that with a gamble roof, just facing a particular path.
But you're, I understand you're asking us for variance that, you know, yes, the, it's a, it's a, you know, location or a site variance, so it makes it a lot easier for us to grant that, that variance when the questions we're asking have answers to them. I understand you haven't taken it, have not taken it to the next step, right? It's, it's a leap of faith on your end to pay an architect, to select materials, to get a quote, to continue to go down that path without having variance, but it's also a leap of faith for us then to grant the variance not knowing any of that information either. And at the end of the day, that's the crossroads we're at. We, we want to help you to a certain degree, but we also want our answers to be able to say, yeah, you know what, it's not going to, you know, negatively affect the aesthetics of the neighborhood. It's not going to have any adverse effects. But the questions, you know, my colleagues and I, board members and I are asking, you don't have the answers to right now. And I get where you're at, but we need those answers to make a decision.
I I honestly think you, you need to go before the planning board. So we can determine the location, but I think the planning board will have to approve the design. But when I get assessed on the, the square footage of my house, it counts the upstairs and the downstairs and I can taxes on the whole thing. So I think the code calls for five hundred square feet or more, and this is technically going to be a thousand square feet because it's a two-story building. Which then that gives the applicant the approval for their variance and allocation. And then allows them to work with an architect to get the actual design because now they know they have permission to place the building and then can work that information.
As long as we, we can wait down.
The code, the code says square feet and if it's a two-story building, it's more than five hundred square feet. But it doesn't, but it doesn't specify that.
Right, it's not specified in the code.
And I know I have to go before the planning board for mine, which should be.
Let me, let me, let me just a question. Is the applicant, will the applicant consent to taking this to the planning board for determination? For, for the planning board?
I'm confused out of it. Is it, we've been guided by the town that it's five hundred square feet or less, doesn't require that stuff.
I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that the code has, I'm not saying that.
The ambiguity.
That, that, right, so, so this is why I said earlier.
Yep.
We can, the applicant can consent to do things, or we can get a legal tug-of-war. We can make you do something you don't think you can, sue the town, you know. Here's what I'm saying. At, at the end of the day, I have to assume that the applicant, of all things being even, wants to be good. And there are some neighbors that are in agreement with the way it stands, there's other neighbors that really aren't opposing the structure, but where is position and how it was? In an effort to get that right, not only for the applicant, but the neighbors, legal requirements of something, is the applicant willing to go to the planning board to get their approval? If you say no, that's, that's, that's fine. We, we, this work, we, whatever decides to do, just cancel.
So when I get into that, 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 for the planning, for the planning board, that. But, but I will voice the concern the applicant has, because he is new to this part of, even though he has built things throughout the state, is the procedure to get this type of application has been cumbersome, there have been missed publication dates, so he has, he's losing time this whole time. At the same time, he's getting written up by the building department for having things in his yard, and so he's trying to rectify that, but at the same time, he's getting strung along month after month, so, but I. I'm not positive on the.
Does anybody on this board object to reviewing their architectural drawings of what they're proposing?
He hasn't submitted a.
Well, I understand, but should he go to the planning board, he would need to provide that. Does anyone, any member of this zoning board have any objections to that review? And you feel comfortable with that?
I asked a question real quick to Josh. What is the cost threshold for a structure to lead architectural plans? Isn't there a dollar amount, square footage amount?
Twenty thousand dollars.
A dollar. So, so they, I can find, that was a came up in here. So, in all likelihood, if this cost escalates because of material selection and things like that, I think it would be moved to go to the planning board, go there and put, and get that, uh, for the.
Yes.
Procedure. But at the same time, on this procedure, I, I just wanna hone this one in. I wanna make sure, if we come back to variances here, we're here to talk about variances, various variances, and the height is allowed, this is where footage is allowed, this is just putting it to the planning board for review side of it. I feel like, to be honest, I feel like we're going beyond the scope of variances that are being tied to this land and talking about things that.
Yes and no, at the end of the day, we have to take into account a lot of different components for variance. And the size of the building, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, all of that, we have to take into account. We get to say, yes, you're getting a variance, or no, you're not getting a variance, based on the information that is provided. There's a lot of information that we don't have, we've asked a lot of questions, we don't have answers to. So I understand what you're saying, it's about the variance. We're here to give you or, or not give you those variances, but we need information to be able to do that. So I understand where you're coming from. Again, I also read the code, it says five hundred square feet in area. To me, that's not the footprint, that is the building size, that's my opinion. It sounds like, Brian, what I heard you say is that you are hoping to, um, going forward with the planning board to get the, the planning board's approval, um, if, and I apologize, is it the planning board? Is it us first on the planning board?
Yeah.
All right, so if, if that is the case, what I'm hearing, okay, is that we can make a vote on the, uh, location contingent upon you getting planning board approval. So if it goes, if it goes this route, we, we review, we, we make our, our vote. If we agree and you get the variance, then you would have to go to the planning board to get their approval for the materials that you don't know yet, the height, the aesthetics, and all the other components in the location that this board ends up deciding.
Now, to be clear, the planning board, these also have to address site placement, drainage, the secret elements that they do. I just want a clarification here. If we're doing that, it sounds like we're changing how the code is written, so we may need another variance.
No, we'll, we're gonna prove it based on one of your options.
Whoop, sorry, what would the other variance be?
So if you're changing the definition of the five hundred square foot, um, oh, never mind, because that would be going, we're going to the planning board.
Correct.
Never mind.
And as far as the placement, if, if we were to go ahead and grant you relief, it would be based on a specific setback.
Right, and they would send it, the planning board's gonna send it back to you is what I'm thinking.
And then, and the planning board will have to.
Place a case on that setback.
And it's on that setback.
Right.
So, uh, it's not really kind of, they will either approve or, uh, with, with our setback.
But what I'm getting at is our location, back to that point that you just made, the location we're having, we would not meet the code because we would come into a variance, so the planning board would just have to condition any consideration that now, subject to the variance being requested.
Right, we would, well, we would grant the variance and then they would approve the building, but not worry about the location as long as it's where the variance allowed it to be.
You would, you would go to the planning board, if the process were to continue, you'd go to the planning board with our approval based on the setbacks that you've agreed on. And then they would have to recognize that this is where the, the structure has to be and then move forward with their review and approval based on our contingent approval.
Correct, so which variance are we considering?
So, all right, so I think for me, we've gone around on this quite a bit. I personally would like to take a look at, Josh, can you pull up the, um, plan, uh, again? Because we do have to make a decision on a location if we are deciding to move forward with this. I'm hoping that we can move forward with this. There's three locations that were provided and during the presentation, uh, there was an option to, um, slide, you know, keep the five-foot setback and then slide it basically along that, that line, if you will. The current option or the, the original option is to keep it in line with the front of the house. Option one is back about seventeen feet from the front of the house, not, uh, not in line with the back of the house as per the code requires. Option two is fifteen feet off of the, uh, side setback, which would not require a side setback variance, but it is, uh, looks like about five or six feet off of the front of the house. Me personally, when I was out there, I, in the plan view, I was originally wanting option two. However, when I was out there, um, I was looking more for option one or something in between. I don't wanna take down a, a nice large maple tree, but I do want the building setback from the front of the house. Um, I think there was a, kind of three feet, which I'm okay with, you know, just again, getting that hierarchy of an accessory building versus the, the main house. So for me, I think to push back about three feet from the front of the house is where I would like it to be placed versus, um, the preferred option.
So a forty-three foot front setback as opposed to the.
Yes.
Forty-four.
And you wanted, how far off the size of?
I'm fine with the five.
Five makes the most sense.
I agree, I mean, when I went out there, asking for the plan, I liked option one myself. I think that works best.
The average.
Right, oh, that's five feet off, I think it works better further back from the house.
Any comments or thoughts on, or?
No, I'm fine with the, the five foot. Keep your foot in line that up in the middle of the yard, it'll stand out. And does it have to go back to full seventeen? You wanna see the tree, probably not. Well, I think the proposal's for forty-two feet.
Yeah, versus forty, forty point four, forty-three point four.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Good with that?
Yeah.
All right, uh, with that, um.
Then, that is the best place to start, is your concern just?
Okay.
Can we just see her?
No, we haven't done see her yet.
Can we? Please.
All right, uh, I make a motion for a type two action under seeker pursuant to NYCR section six one seven point five of the environmental code.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you want to pick the, uh, the conditions?
I think we've made it less out of character with the neighborhood. There's sheds all over the place, not a lot of accessory structures, but I think it will be aesthetically, um.
Acceptable.
Acceptable, thank you, to the neighborhood. Um, it will be not indentured for nearby properties. The most impacted neighbor is the neighbor directly to the north, who is actually at this meeting, this evening speaking, that they are in agreement with the placement of the building. Um, we have reviewed all of the other methods and locations with which to place the building and have analyzed, eliminating the side setback or pushing it as far back as possible. This is the best location for aesthetics within the neighborhood, and also it preserves the current vegetation and the large maple tree. Um, the request is somewhat substantial, but given this is a corner lot, the backyard is extremely shallow. Um, I don't think there's any place on this lot where an accessory structure could be placed that would fulfill all of the setbacks of the code for an accessory structure. Um, no adverse physical environment impacts to the side of the neighborhood. It, it is self-created, but then again, it is a corner lot, so you're, you're stuck with the lack of real estate that you have. Um, if your front were actually Mill Creek, you'd have plenty of room to stick in the backyard of the house. It would be no less visible to anybody else, but it wouldn't require variance to be located there. Um, and I'll say this will be a desirable change because it will meet up with parcel and allowing the applicant to have room to put some of the interior that's currently stored outside under the roof and inside the barn, inside the accessory building, and therefore clean it up. Um, any other way to make a motion? Those are just the things.
We've even covered it.
Okay, so then with that, I make a motion to grant area variance at six seventy-one Willow Lane to allow a side setback of five feet from the north property line and a front setback from the east property line of forty-three feet. Forty-three point four or forty-three?
It says forty-three, right?
It says forty-three point four, excuse me.
Forty-three point four, okay. Um, from the front, which is the east, to allow the placement of a five hundred.
One thousand.
Well, one thousand square foot accessory structure with a five hundred foot.
The footprint.
Thank you. Detached wood frame structure on a point four six eight pre-purcell, SPL zero six five point thirteen dash two dash eleven, located in an R three simple family residential district. And then, um, granting of your permit will be conditioned upon approval by the planning board and then the variance will be conditioned when you're meaningful construction and unnecessary approvals.
Not to be used for building, uh, space.
Oh, true.
And not to be used for commercial purposes.
Correct.
Second.
So it's a condition upon.
Correct.
And in the event that this later determined, the planning board, where you was not necessary. That is, or that's for the board, this board, zoning board, that you complete that definition for the improved cost structure of the building. So the board has a judgment on, and on that issue as well.
Constantly.
Materials.
Yep. Cross design materials.
Must have had the way, before the board.
Correct, so they, you're learning.
Can I have the, the term, the answer?
Okay, you can hurry.
Should you go?
Second.
You second?
Of the area set.
All right, Mrs. Wallen? Aye. Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
All right, you have your, uh, variance, uh, you have to go to the planning board for, what's that?
There are two variants.
Yes, you have both variances, yes.
So forty-three point four feet to the front, five feet side setback.
A good, uh, zoning board, or planning board for approval from them. It's gonna be about all living applicants, you have one year, uh.
One year. We've got it from the completion of the planning board or from here?
One year starts, meaning full construction.
When you're gonna start.
Meaning full construction.
Okay, so I have to bill it, you're right.
No.
One year starts, meaning full construction.
Oh, gotcha.
From this meeting, but you should have all the other approvals longer for that.
I hope so.
In the hall.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, uh, twelve forty-six Stamford Crescent Garage Edition? Please.
Twelve forty-six Stamford Crescent Garage Edition, located at twelve forty-six Stamford Crescent. Advocate Bob Peters is requesting area variances to allow a front and side setback based on what is required, associated with the construction of a two hundred forty-five square foot three-day, third-day extension to an existing garage in a point four one eight pre-purcell having SPL over zero six five point one three dash three dash sixty, located in an R three simple family residential district under section three five zero dash twelve of the code of the town of Webster.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Uh, just to give you a little quick review, from last month, I was here to, for two variances on a two hundred and forty-five square foot addition to my two and a half car garage. One variance would be on the west side, which is fifteen feet normally, and I need to take that to nine feet, so I need to six feet more. And then, uh, on the front of the property, it's a fifty-foot setback and I need forty-six. We went over all that, I think, and I, I handed prints, drawings and things, so you can see exactly what it looks like. Question came up, gonna move this structure back to the back part of the house and we talked a little bit about. I have a patio there, I have kitchen windows there, and it really wouldn't be something that I'd be interested in doing, so I didn't go through there, wouldn't be doing. And Don, I saw you there today, looking, and I wasn't home, but I did see you.
I always learn from.
And I was gonna talk to you. So, and, and the other thing we had talked about near the end of the discussion was that the Monroe County water has an easement between our two houses. And I would be building right up to that easement. And then there could be a potential overhang of my roof, so I, I got a license from the Monroe County Water Authority to be able to do that. And you didn't really wanna move forward until you saw something in writing, so I went to them. I, I sent the email to Catherine and explanation of what they said. And more or less, they say, even if I did protrude, which I'm not going to, but if I did, I would have to redo the license, so the license is, I am willing to take it, and if I get over more, I gotta tell them and then they'll make me sign them the license. So, um, basically that's where we're at, I guess, that was the last thing you would ask me to do before you had something. Ask me, do you have any more questions? There was a legal thing, I think, to attach, I think your attorney last time did mention about, he wasn't quite sure of the legal formality of the water authority, and the water authority came back and said there is no legal attachment to the town of Webster for the variance. Just so that would be understood.
So just go back over, so your existing garage is twenty-two feet deep. You're looking for a garage that's twenty-six feet deep, you're looking to extend closer to the front of the property by four feet, uh, beyond what, um, beyond what the current house is. And you indicated the reason that you don't wanna go back. And you indicated the reason that you don't want to go back was because that you have windows in the kitchen. Kitchen is on the other side of the garage, so at the end of the day, windows would not be blocked in any way, shape or form. Because this plan does indicate the bay window, so that window would not be blocked. There'd be about twelve feet between the window and the garage addition. And that window is actually ten feet back from the back of the garage, so that window still wouldn't be blocked because it would only be back about four feet. So talk to me the reason why you don't want to go back.
Okay, that's... There is another window there, which is the bathroom window, which would be covered up.
Okay, that's good. I don't want people looking at me when he's asking anyway.
You'd be surprised how you sit there and look outside and ask. But anyways, if we did bring it back, it's gonna be more cost for me to be able to do the roof structure and everything, bring everything back. I did look at it, and we did look at all of it. And so it just didn't make sense to us financially to do that. It's easier to construct it the way it is now and just go out four feet and go up the front. And I did send a drawing to you to show you what it looked like aesthetically. It's gonna be great, it's all gonna be cedar sided and match the house. The doors, the garage door, it'll be new, but they'll be all the same. I went around to eight of my neighbors, I could have went to more, and they all agreed that they have no problem with that. And they were very helpful about that, so if I did find a neighbor that was really concerned about it, I probably wouldn't be here. But they were all great about it. That's kind of where we're back. I mean, I could, you know, Michael, go back, and the first thing I thought about doing was going back. But then I got the architect in there, and we have to rip the whole roof off, and it's twenty thousand dollars, and it'd be bad, so... Better off maybe. So this is the easiest type of construction to do. What I want to do is add this two hundred and forty-five square feet. And it's only nine feet more added to what I already have. But I have to have a fourteen-inch bay, so I go back into the existing building, more feet there. Actually, I'm looking to make the bay wide enough to accommodate cars and stuff.
You have any questions?
From what I'm seeing today, I would agree that that garage was pushed back to make it all the area very dark. Not only if you're standing outside, but the windows. Just to give you a nice warm feel, dark conditions.
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
No concern with, as far as I recall, when I drove by last month, all the other houses, the front of the house, nobody else has protruded. But there are other additions that are off to the side, you know, other garage additions off to the side, but I don't recall any other garages or any other components. Speaking of further from... I drove the loop up these parts.
Okay, the distance is coming out as four feet.
Originally did this, ten years ago, I was gonna do this. I had the architect draw the drawings, and it was just gonna be like normal setback two feet. And I would only have twenty feet in there, but I'm actually putting in a lift to store my cars on, to stack my cars on. And to do that and to get the garage door to be able to roll up, I had to be out so many feet so I could roll that door up and still have my lift inside, so I need twenty-six feet.
I really don't think that four feet is gonna be noticeable from the hallway. Plus the existing architectural styles, you know, stuffs out, stuffs out.
Well, yeah, it goes progressively further in the lot if you...
Right.
And looking at the front setbacks, as I go along Stamford Crescent, when I just pulled them up on the GIS maps, a lot of the subdivisions, if the setback is fifty feet, you can draw a line at fifty feet, and all of the houses come right up to that line. And this subdivision, they're staggered. So I don't think it will look out of place just because they're not all in a nice neat line. Whereas when we do have a front setback on a nice neat line house, it definitely stands out.
I don't think you're gonna notice that four-foot pump up as you're driving by any of them.
I think the four-foot pump up handles architectural character to the house.
Any other questions, comments on the board? I'll open up to the public, if anybody wants to speak for or against this project? Nobody? Back to the board? Any final expressions? No? Seega? Take a motion for type two action under Seega pursuant to NYC R section six one seven point five of the environmental code? Second. Those in favor? Right. Any more of these findings? Chris?
The project, BUMAT, in effect, the existing characteristics of the neighborhood, the relief requested is minimal. It's not a character, BUMAT create a detriment to adjoining properties. The benefit based on the applicant's statement is not achievable by any other method and still allow him to enjoy the existing house and windows that are in the structure. The request is not substantial. There are no adverse physical environmental impacts to the site. And while the difficulty is self-created, once again, is minimal. And I truly believe this is a desirable change and that the request is not significant. Sure, I am making motion that we approve the one-two-four-six Stamford Crescent Garage Edition. The area variances to allow front and side setback less than what is required associated with the construction of a two hundred and forty-five square foot third bay extension to an existing two-car garage on a zero point four one acre parcel having SPL number zero six five of thirteen dash three dash sixty, located in R three single family residential district under section three fifty dash twelve of the code of the town of Webster.
The only thing I can do is add the setback and the front setback dimensions.
It's forty-six feet to the front and nine feet to the side.
Second.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowler? Aye. Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye. You have your variance. You have pursuant to getting a painting and building permit and one year's substantial...
What, how long will it be before we pull the sound?
We'll arrange for that, it'll probably need some time to get to this week.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you.
Next up, forty-six Lake Road Residence.
Forty-six Lake Road Residence, located at forty-six Lake Road. Applicant Raymond Menini is requesting area variances to allow setbacks less than what are required in association with the construction of a thirteen hundred thirty-three square foot family residence on a point zero nine acre parcel having SPL number zero six three point zero nine dash one dash thirteen point one, located in WD Waterfront Development District under section three five zero dash eleven three five zero dash twenty-five of the code of the town of Webster.
How's it going? Good evening, I'm Tom Greg McNam from McMeadle Row, I'm representing Ray and Ron and Ben Menini, the owners of the property here recently. Our request is for, first of all, their intent is to demolish the existing house and build a new home on that site. As many of the lots are down there on Lake Road, a narrow thirty-five foot wide lot. We're requesting side and front setback variances. I would note that we did appear before the board back in February of twenty-third of twenty-twenty-one, and they did grant these variances. But we've been since that time struggling with the D E C to get the necessary permits to construct this house. We've finally reached a point where the D E C has accepted our plans. They published the notification in the Webster Herald, I believe that was last week, and then after a ten-day waiting period, they'll be issuing the permit to build the house. So we are through the process with the D E C. And this time, we wanted to come back and get these variants, hopefully get these variances re-approved.
Mr. McNam, what were the permits the D E C needed to grant? Just for the record.
Well, this, this home, as all the homes on our lot, they are both in the emotional erosion hazard area and the structural hazard area. And to do any work, you need a permit. We filed a joint permit with the D E C, the Corps of Engineers and the Department of State. Department of State and the Corps of Engineers approved the project fairly quickly. But the D E C, because it's in the structural hazard area, only allows the expansion of a structure by a certain much. We wanted us to move it right up to the right away of Lake Road. We are asking for a thirty-five foot front setback and move it to sixty feet required. One of the reasons is that we're adding a garage to the front, to the Lake Road side of this. Ron and Menini, who lives in the house and will live in the new house, is disabled. And they were looking to get a garage so he could drive in and access what would be a very small one-floor living area. There is a loft, if he has company, but it'll be a... The living area is one floor.
Okay, so they did do the permit for the actual protrusion area in the...
Yeah, the structural hazard area.
Right.
Now, there was a variance from the D E C required to do any work within the structural hazard area. We did it, that was part of the permit.
Thank you. So with respect to any thing that is being requested here, there's been no, other than the... Other than obtaining the variances of which you just spoke, there are no other changes relative to the previously approved variances?
There are no, we're asking for the same variances that were approved in twenty-one. Four and a half foot side for both east and west side, which actually, in one case, the building, the current house is a little over a foot and four inches from one sideline now, and so we'll be opening up the space. In order to center it in the lot, we'll have a four and a half foot setback on the side. A front setback off of Lake Road, per code is sixty feet, and we're asking for thirty-five. And again, this is very similar to many of the homes, if you look at the homes on Lake Road. Many of them have put these garage additions on the front of their homes. Many homes down there have been reconstructed with similar variances.
Any other questions, guys, on the board? You guys, I'm assuming you're, I wasn't here until twenty-one was came.
Yeah, we... The setbacks are consistent with many of the houses in the area that have been rebuilt in the existing lot, primarily in the existing footprints. With respect to the garage addition off the front, there've been at least two others in that area. One further up the road, and sixty-eight is significantly closer to the road than this one. And then the one at number forty is a little bit further setback, so this is striking the average between the two.
Sixty-eight, forty, forty.
The house, the house at forty has one, and the house at sixty-eight has one.
Are you further down eighty-eight, ninety-eight?
Yeah, and then the road gets much closer to the houses than the center. So it's, it's aligned with, and it actually, by bringing it away from the east property line, more centered within the lot, it actually improves the spacing between the homes.
The rear setback or lake side setback roughly the same as what is currently?
It's actually less. That was, that was one of the sticking points with the D E C. We had to, the current house has a large deck on the lakeside. We had proposed the deck, we're cut back to about a six-foot wide deck right now. We had a...
A stairway?
With a stairway, yeah. That was, this was a real chore to get this through the D E C. There was a lot of concessions ahead if you made it to get through the board right now.
Any other questions, concerns on the board? I'll open up to the public, anybody want to speak for or against the project?
This will be quick, because I gotta get home and let my dogs out. I'm Jack Dwyer, and I'm in that little yellow house next to Ron's. And when, when Ron first started talking about doing something about his house, you know, that same bar is a pretty unique little community. Everybody gets along pretty well, and everybody knows exactly what everybody else is doing. And Ron is, just like anybody else would do there, he talked to his neighbors. And I, there's an attorney here, so I want to make sure that you're just standing with Marco. And I'm not their representative, but I, I can assure you that over barbecues and a few beers and just talking with neighbors, everybody is enthusiastic about this property being changed. I, you all seem like really intelligent people. I think most of you have seen that property. Okay, yeah, well, it's, it's just intuitively obvious to either a casual observer that something has to be done. And I, can I say something, Mr. Marco, can I say something off the record here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. If you went in, if you ever went inside, I don't, I'm sure you would agree with me that that would, that house would never, ever get a... that that would, that house would never, ever get a certificate of occupancy. So it's, it's, it's a project that's desperately needed. And.
That's not very nice.
Actually, more than that.
That's not very nice.
Ron is a really decent guy, and he deserves to have a nice home. To your point, sir, he's, he's got some very serious house problems. And I think he should spend the rest of his life in a home on the lake that belonged to his family and such, and enjoys. So, thank you for listening to me. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is David, he's from Los Angeles.
Can you speak up?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Okay.
David, he's from Los Angeles. I've been here before talking about possibly putting pedestrian bridge at the outlet, and therefore, you know, all the properties there along the area of interest to me. The one thing I'm here to ask about is, what is the, what is the property?
It's on the plans, 35 feet.
35 feet?
Yep.
Yeah, that's like, popular, popular. Yeah, it's not very wanted, is it?
Okay, so it's not. What's wrong with this room?
Well, I'm wondering about public access. My understanding is Webster has zero footage of beach. Public access. Certainly, sorry.
Further down, down to the part that gives you access?
Oh, Webster Park.
Down to the part, no.
This is the sandbar.
Sandbar part.
I have the same beach there, but okay, perhaps. But anyways, it'd be nice to have a public beach there like there is on the Rockford side. It's, I like the idea of it. And when you go up to Charlotte, there's actually something called a hidden, hidden walkway up behind the houses by the lake. And I was just reading the portion of the town code there about waterfront districts, and it does mention the possibility of putting a walkway as close to the lake as possible. My question is, on the lakeside, when I walk from here right now, I see some private property signs that are questionable in place. I don't know if you guys have looked at that, but please look at it at some point, because it's helping build this property. Just, just so you'll get it. And my question is, in the future, would it be possible to put some sort of public access coming in from the pier across all of those properties to clear this? So that's a question here. As far as this property here, you got it, on the cabinet board, yes.
Thank you for the, will be beyond our scope for tonight, but I appreciate the comments and I think was a consideration.
Yeah, but it's, I just wonder if it's possible to walk right between wherever this property is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that, public, anybody else, public comments? Great, back to the board, file discussion. Any other comments on the board? No? All right. She is the Seager. Make a motion for type 2 action under Seager pursuant to NYC R R, sections 17.5 of the environmental code. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Anybody want to do the findings? Don?
Although this application has received the variances, and the variances being requested have not changed since 19, sorry, 2001. I mean, I really have the same conditions, the depth and so much rather long in having received all this permit from the D E C, the Corps of Engineers. I would basically make a motion to grant approvals for 46 Lake Road to the, to the, we question the area variances for setbacks on sides being 4.5 and.
Yes.
Yep.
4.5 and a side.
And a side. 35 foot 4 front setback.
Can we adopt the section that's in the findings from the February 23rd, 2021 zoning board meeting? Because this has already been previously approved, but it expired based on D E C taking.
Well, most of the quality, if they don't.
And there's no changes.
This is associate construction of a 1333 square foot single-family residence in a 0.9 acre parcel having S P L number 063.09-1-1, 3.1, located in Waterfront Development District under section 350-11 and 350-13.
Mr. Haza?
Aye.
Mrs. Bola?
Aye.
Mr. Leibner?
Aye.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
You have, you have your variance. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Agreed.
Is there any other administrative matters, four minutes for May 14th? No? No? Okay. We'll let for next meeting. Let, a motion to S D A. Will you better?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
He has a grid 26 wide building.
Huh?
He has a grid 26.5 wide building.
I don't know real well, right now.